Okay, wait, I didn't need that. All right, we are back in open session. Kathy is...
Kathy's sitting over there.
Oh, she's over there. She moved on me, okay. I don't see anybody here, so I'm assuming no public comment, okay. I'll wait for Dan to sit down. Sorry, Dan, I didn't take a full count for where everybody was. Okay, so first off, any recommended changes to the agenda for tonight? Okay, so with that, we have a public, we have the public hearing. So is there, for the budget, is there a motion for the Board of Education to open the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 2025 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there, I guess I'll have to ask if there's anybody here that wants to comment, right? Jim doesn't need to say anything?
Without public comments.
All right, so there's nobody here for public comment, so we will close the budget hearing. Is there a motion?
Kathy?
Oh, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhal.
Hi.
Mr. Marsadi.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Gunn.
Hi.
Ms. Kayla.
Hi.
Ms. Class.
Hi.
Okay, and we have nobody here to comment, so we will move to close it. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to declare the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 2025 budget to be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marsadi.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Gunn.
Hi.
Ms. Kayla.
Hi.
Ms. Class.
Hi.
With that, we will move into Superintendent's report, and we'll pass it over to you, Dr. Ryan Boyd.
So, a couple of quick things here. School starts tomorrow, I think everybody knows that. So, we had our meet and greets, we shifted to a morning meet and greet this year, so I think what we heard was favorable. I'm hoping it's better for working families and families in general, and also quite honestly, better for our staff, because then they go and spend a whole day in professional learning. So, but the other part of opening school year is thanking summer school. We had a really robust summer school program this year. I just want to thank the staff that taught during summer school, and also the families that participated. Heard really great things, popped in a couple times, but overall, a great summer school experience, and hope if your children participated, it was that. We then had two days of professional development. Yesterday, we were at the Discovery Center at the zoo, all staff. So I have the schedule attached, and then today is more of a building level day, although I will tell you, we had a snag with our professional development provider on our new English Language Arts curriculum, and we had to do some flipping and flopping with our afternoon sessions. But we got through two days of a lot of meaningful content for our staff, and then tomorrow, kids come, so that is what we are prepared and ready for. And then I also have for everybody, just our most recent student enrollment overview and update. So this is, I think, literally Jonathan Hoffman, our data person revised this midday today. I don't know if it's, the changes are real noticeable, but we've had a good number of registrations coming in even this week, so our enrollment continues to shift and change. We're kind of at our above the average total enrollment, but you can see there's always some unique variability, grade level to grade level. The student assignment algorithm, I think, tends, you know, still works really well for us. There's still not a perfect balance. We do, we don't want to assign families that live across the street from a school to be at a different school, so there's some, you know, parameters. Sometimes we'll hear that there's a family with a childcare situation or something, and they really need to be at a school that may not be typical on the, through the assignment process. So, again, but overall, class size is nothing above 25 at the elementary level, and pretty nice sized kindergarten classes overall. Any questions about any of that, getting school started?
I don't know how much it had been looked into yet. I guess I'm somewhat surprised to see the kindergarten enrollment go down so much across the district.
Yeah, yeah. I looked at that, too. I think it's also not necessarily final. Final is, you know, we were saying it's relative to the first day of kindergarten last year. I mean, we're comparing previous kindergarten numbers to sort of first day of kindergarten, and there may be children that come and go over the course of the year yet, but it is a little bit lower. We were at 162 kindergarteners last year, year before that, 183, the year before that, 152. You know, so it's, there is this grade level variability.
I guess along similar lines, like, there was a lot of first graders coming in as well, which we'd seen in the past.
Right, right, yeah. And we thought maybe that had, we had solved that with full day kindergarten, so it's, it's hard to know, you know, it's hard to make sort of clear predictions on why something is happening or not. We do, you know, kids come over the course of their educational years, right? So it's, there seems to be enough shift and change in the community, families moving here, and obviously are enrolled. But the class sizes sort of fall within this range of average we have, but it's a little bit different than other prior years, so.
I was curious, along the same lines, and it might just be the same response. The seventh grade class, there was a large shov- is that, I don't know if "common" is the word, but do we normally see such an increase in so- I can see six going down, but seven?
Yeah, I don't think it's common. You know, one, and I should pull it out, and then we should decide if it should be redone. I'm looking at you, Don. One year, we did a, like, the sort of change over time by grade levels, which is probably something we could pull together if there was board interest in that.
Is that the right way to look at it, just on a diagonal?
Yeah.
Like, never really get added in any given year to that grade level, like?
Yeah, I mean, and this, this, but like, why is seventh grade a year that people arrive, let's say, you know, or something like that? Is it, I don't think necessarily so. First grade certainly has been, because we felt families who were going somewhere else for kindergarten, but, yeah.
I think sometimes it's people setting their kids up for high school.
Yeah.
Because that is considered by some to be a point where kids are really starting to figure out what the rest of their life might be like, and they really want to position them, you know, to go to RV.
Yeah. Yeah, and some elementaries go till six.
That, too.
Is the private schools, is the private school K6?
Usual.
I think St. Mary's is K8.
Most private schools are.
Oh, through eight.
Yeah, I think K8.
I was thinking, when they did, when they considered elementary versus junior high, and if they're thinking, oh, most students can go to RV, transition at the end of seventh grade.
At seven, to your point.
So they go to seventh grade, and, you know, so that could also be, because like, I went to K, K6, elementary.
Same.
So interesting.
On your comment on overtime, I don't know that I would do anything more than take the district level data by grade level and just go years this way.
Yeah.
I would put a lot of work into it, if you want to put something like that together. I'll look at it if you put it together. I don't, don't need it.
If you need to know, like, grade level by grade level, there's, and I know, I looked at just the district totals, you know, took a simple average there. We're above our 11 year average in terms of total enrollment, so.
I almost said, didn't, wasn't it neat, sometime over the summer, didn't you give us?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, it was in the July board report, and I had pulled it back up just for my own review as I was discussing this, so.
Yeah, so for me, I mean, this is enough for what I was interested in.
And that's in the July board packet, if anybody's interested in referring back to it.
See, I thought we just looked at that.
Yeah. The one other thing I have, last year, and I believe it was board-driven, big idea was to have a fall social for our staff, and we did that last year on the day of our October Institute Day, immediately following jointly with our REC, and so we are looking at doing that again. We're tentatively holding the date of October 15th, so if people want to mark their own calendars, or if there's any objection to doing that again. I think it was a nice, I think people enjoyed it, so.
Did you just invite the board?
Yeah.
Do they want us there?
I think you did, I think it's a board.
Okay.
Yes, I think you should, I think people were there last year.
Yeah, it was fun.
Did you, okay, maybe I had a twin left, okay.
I would look forward to it.
Yeah, and it's like a three, because it'll be a day off, it'll be the...
It's a long weekend.
Is it the Monday or the Tuesday?
It's Tuesday.
Okay, after.
October 15th.
Yeah.
You don't take that time.
But yes, the board is welcome to join. I actually think the teachers appreciate it.
Can't come.
Okay.
Dang it. I was gonna put that on my, I got me in Texas that week.
I could dial in, yeah.
I could dial in, yeah. You get that set up for me, Don?
Are we thinking same, like, location, so, kind of, thought that worked well?
Cool.
Yeah.
Sounded like it went over well last year, so yeah, I'm happy we're doing it again.
Great. Thank you for the idea and the support, and for coming. So, all right, and then, that's all I have.
Cool, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move into the approval of the consent agenda. So could I have the board secretary read tonight's consent agenda items?
Yes. Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of minutes of the following meetings. July 17th, regular business meeting, July 17th, closed session, the personnel report as presented, payables pre-list as of July 31st, along with payables pre-list as of August 21st, the education research development, or EdRed, dues, the Sipin memorandum of understanding, and the physical education memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. Does anyone, would anyone like to take any of these items off for additional discussion before voting? All right, Martha, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Do we motion?
Ah, I need a motion, I'm sorry. Man, I'm all over the place tonight, okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Sorry, that was me making the motion.
Okay.
So.
You're messing me up with the board.
Second. David, you moved, you, you said so moved?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, so Dave, stuff, okay, Kathy, could you please call the roll? All right, I'm gonna get it together.
Okay, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Gunn.
Hi.
Ms. Kayla.
Hi.
Ms. Class.
Hi.
Mr. Marhal.
Hi.
Mr. Marsadi.
Hi.
Too much out of practice, it's, okay. So, that moves us into board member comments. We haven't had much activity here or school in session, but any school-related comments that anybody would like to make?
I will say, I had a lot of parents notice how short the supply lists were, and they were very happy.
Oh, really? Okay.
So.
That's good, that's good feedback.
Our collective deciding on it.
Spent quite a bit of time deciding some of those things, so I'm glad it was, I'm glad it was recognized.
Yeah, everybody was, everybody who talked to me said they were really excited about it, so, and I still went to Target.
How was your shopping, Dan?
Couldn't help but find good deals. It went, went pretty well, other than the, the five sharpened red pencils had a tough time finding those, tracking those down. I finally got some at Office Depot, but, yes, I was going probably to the fifth store for that, and my wife's saying, so you pushed this off.
You should ask me, I have so many from work.
Really?
Red pencils, oh, yes.
Could have had a side business there, maybe.
Next year, I'm not.
That's why you couldn't find it.
Yeah, maybe that's us. But I also say, I will say that this morning's meet and greet and supply drop-off was a great event, and morning was a, was a great time. Everybody had a lot of energy. I know I got my steps in following the kids up and down the halls of Blythe several times. It's great to be on the cusp of a new school year.
Yeah. Mine are transitioning into Hauser now, so we had the supply stuff, well, basically just putting stuff in their locker on Monday, and then that meet and greet was them on their own, so I'm kind of liking some of this independence that I'm starting to get here.
I sent mine on in despite today to test it out again, and walk around.
Yeah, feeling good, feeling confident? You? No? Oh, they'll get there.
It'll happen, in a week.
All right, anything else before we move on?
There was some, actually, somebody using a trailer ground, not even, what, two hours old today. So it was very much in demand.
I think the mulch went down at 5:30 PM, so, yeah.
All the main parts look to be in, so, looking pretty nice. So, yeah, anybody's interested in a parking lot, a playground, there's a new one back there. All right, that'll move us into old business, and our first item here is approval of the fiscal year 2025 budget. So is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, do we need any further discussion on this? I know we've talked about it a couple times, but anything else on your minds question-wise for Jim or anything before we vote? Nope, okay. Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn.
Hi.
Ms. Kayla.
Hi.
Ms. Class.
Hi.
Mr. Marhal.
Hi.
Mr. Marsadi.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Thank you. And up next is the facility advisories, advisory committee agenda. We have the agenda attached here, so I'll invite either Dave or Joel to give a little bit of overview on that.
Sorry, I'm just going to the agenda. It's, I'm messing things up here, that's all. So, we talked about the, obviously, we talked about the central Hauser campus. To be honest, we're already way beyond what we discussed, because all the worries that Remesh had about weather and things getting together, things worked out. We have a parking lot, there's a playground, obviously, the grass and the rest of landscaping still needs to be installed, but that looks really good, and it's done before school starts, so.
Right, just.
That's all that counts.
Do you have any sense of, like, the extra stuff, like, the planting and the landscaping is, just before winter sets in?
Generally, you want to plant things in after it's done being hot, so this is pretty much August, September, November, October is the best time to plant.
Okay.
You don't want to plant anything in July and August for obvious reasons, so we're on target for that.
What's the, what's the end date for, like, all the grass and the planting and the landscaping, you're talking like, November?
They want, thinking back to last year, I don't think, we didn't actually discuss this at the meeting, but they will want to get the grass down as quickly as possible to try and let it have a chance to establish, because then it also gets next spring to establish, and that was.
Give it as long time to root before the ground freezes, okay.
Yes.
And how extensive is that? Like, is that, is that, are they done with, they just need to lay the grass, or is there more?
From what we just looked at outside, they will still have to add some topsoil, because if you noticed, you saw some long, long linear things in the ground, so those are the trench drains. Those are what lets the grass, the moisture, the rain drain from the grass so that it doesn't become a mud pit, and so.
Channels it into that big pit that we just did.
Channels it. So, but that's also, they, they still have to install the sprinkler system. I believe we have sprinkler system, right, Martha?
I don't think there's a sprinkler system. Jim, I don't think there's a sprinkler system underground, you mean, for the?
Jim, is there a sprinkler system?
For the? Field?
Back here.
Lawn sprinklers? Do we do sprinklers in the grass field area over here? No?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm misremembering a different project.
So that's not, that's almost done, then, basically?
Put down the dirt, seed it, and then it gets watered and maintained so that it grows well.
Okay, so the fence isn't for any kind of work after that, so it's purely just to keep people off the grass?
Right.
Fence is to keep, keep people off of it, because until the grass gets established, it's easily damaged. Those roots need to interweave and intertwine and grow deep.
Okay, so in the next couple of months, we should expect all the rest of the, like, vegetation, all the fine details and everything will be done, so.
Correct.
And I think it's going to happen sooner than months. I know I communicated just with Remesh this evening by text, and he said it's a more elaborate process, but they'll be getting topsoil down soon, so it'll, like, right now, it's rock in there, so I think even that'll look better, and then some plantings will start to go in. He said soon, like, meaning like, the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
We do have the family fun night in Central in the playground dedication coming up in the next, what?
Yeah, the sixth, I think.
Friday, September 6th, so by then, do we anticipate that there will be dirt infilled into those planters, and we'll shine it up a bit? I, I think it'll look better than it looks tonight. Remesh said, like, I, we talked about that, and I think we even shared with Central PTO that, like, the plantings might not be in. Some will be in, some probably won't be, but it'll look better.
Yeah, and when you get to landscaping, it's very weather dependent, i.e., if it's wet outside, there's nobody doing it.
Yeah, I'm not even asking for trees, I'm just wanting a little more polish, if it's going to be the dedication.
Just to me, it crossed my mind right now. I know we had issues with the, some of the trees at Ames in terms of when they were planted. I don't know if that's something that we can look into this time around and make sure that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I think it was some watering also, and I think what we ended up doing is, Jim, that'll be Jim to work on, but watering plan for the field, and like, I think the, the village for a fee, because they have a watering truck that goes around, like, yeah, which is probably more of what we'll need than a garden hose.
It's probably more regular and more established if we are able to contract it or make arrangements with.
I have a question. So now that, I know in the construction, when a lot of things were shut down, gym classes and, like, recess and stuff couldn't happen at Central, so now is that back to normal for this year?
It will be back to normal. I think they're gonna keep children not in the back. I know, Mr. Gass just sent out an email saying, like, you know, school starts tomorrow, there's still some things. There was heavy equipment out there until yesterday, and so, he's like, they can't, kids can't go out there, not when there's heavy equipment. Now, we've all noticed tonight, the heavy equipment is gone. So, things are literally changing sort of, you know, hour by hour, so once kids are able to go outside, we're anticipating Monday.
Oh, good.
But I think not tomorrow or Friday, just to make sure that there's no other equipment coming in or any other piece of the project that we're unaware of or something, so, yeah.
I know they'll sweep and clean all the.
Yeah, and they're gonna power wash it all, yeah.
If, if it is all possible to get dirt in those planters, or we just find a different spot to take the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I agree. It looks very industrial or something, or barren right now, yeah.
So I also see on the advisory committee agenda, the Blythe Park Playground, as I recall, there was an issue there of ownership dispute. I don't know if that got any further down the road or not.
From what Martha said, we've engaged some property people, for lack of a better, to investigate titles and determine exact ownership, so.
But I think it's a great, I'm glad you brought it up, and I know Julie will probably get to it over the course of the agenda. So we asked for a, what I would describe as an in-depth title search, which came back, according to them, 100% inconclusive as to who owns the property.
Yeah.
So, and it's like historic maps is the best way I can explain it, and that the, the maps change, like, how the properties are all numbered, they changed, and so they're going in to, like, do some additional analysis of these maps, and we will hopefully have an answer yet this fall, because the goal might be, right, and the board will have more discussion on this, would be to potentially update that playground summer of 2025.
It's my understanding, previously, Parks and Rec of Riverside has been the one to maintain and.
They maintain it.
And put that stuff there.
But they've indicated that they believe we own it, but that seems to be a somewhat new indication, and that's why we worked with our architecture firm to say, let's get clarity, and that's what the Facility Advisory Committee, David and Joel, said, let's, let's bring clarity to all of you. Even if the clarity, if it were to be that we don't own it, or it stays inconclusive, through an intergovernmental agreement, I think if we want to make the improvements, we can just get clear in an intergovernmental agreement.
And Martha, that's the approach I think we should take, is we, and I think we discussed this at least very tangentially at the meeting, is DLA should look at the existing equipment at Blythe Park. This was a recommendation on my end, so it's not a commitment, I'm not committing the board to anything, but DLA should look at the equipment that's out there, propose some kind of playground improvement that gets the same number, same number of pieces of equipment. We should have a design, talk to Parks and Rec about an IGA, and then we should install that so that we have, all our schools have similar playground equipment, all the kids are treated equally. Any land issues can be addressed in the IGA, because it's just an agreement, it's, it's an agreement to agree that we're going to improve this space. It, from what DLA said, because safety regulations have changed a bit, the equipment will need to get spread out a little bit more, so you've got a little bit more distance between things, so that the kid who falls off the whirling thing doesn't, you know, land in some other kid. And sorry, that's very basic, but that's the general idea, is keep things spread out enough so kids don't get hurt. I don't know that there's really a better way to go about this, since ownership is debatable, and I don't think Parks and Rec has the resources anyway, and they have a five-year plan, and that's going to take them a long time to figure out. Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, I was about to interrupt you. I apologize. Has the board ever considered, like, engaging a consultant beyond DLA to help us, to just inform us on space utilization around, like, immersive, educational, like?
Just in general?
Just generally, you know, like, I, I, like, I went through the process with seeing how the playground was determined at Central, and not that I didn't think it was a good process, but there, I imagine there are playground experts and consultants that sort of can maybe inform us a bit more around spaces and safety and sharp corners that I've noticed in our facilities that haven't been caught by DLA, and so, like, I'm, I'm just curious if we've ever sort of taken it a step further, because I know that those groups are out there.
I think we're supposed to pick up a lot of those things when they did their facilities assessment, so maybe we need to remind them to be a little bit more aggressive, and that they may need to have, you know, in theory, their educational expert.
Yeah, as I recall, their initial presentation, they had done other playgrounds aside from just ours, several.
But, but I think what you're saying is, like, not just playgrounds, right, educational spaces in general, improving educational spaces in general, so, yeah.
Even like, when we looked at redoing the, under, like, the Blythe, in the library space, like, engaging with a consultant on that was, is that something that we've done in the past?
So, so, when I started here in 2016, we had a different architecture firm, and the district had had a different architecture firm. There had been, like, architectural firm changes about three times over in about a three to five-year period. And then when we hired DLA, we brought in a number of different architecture firms, as well as, and I was just trying to think of their name, and it'll come to me, but it's not off the top of my head. They are not a true architecture firm, they're kind of like a educational space reimagining. It's just that they are architects that do that work, and I think we felt it would be redundant, that the architecture firms that specialize in educational spaces sort of do that design work. But there are, there are different ways, I guess, what I learned through that process, is the way a different architecture firm or consulting group might do it, but, like, DLA has a design portion of their firm, and then beyond the design portion, so that was sort of, like, we, I'm not sure I'm articulating this all clearly enough, but when we started at Ames, so we decided to embark on a master facilities plan essentially in 2017, and set kind of a 10-year outlook for making improvements in the spaces in general, and we did a lot of visioning work. We worked with the Ames staff, was specifically around the Ames visioning, but it was really visioning for the district, district-wide. Like, teachers talked about wanting spaces to look joyful and inclusive, they wanted more natural light, they wanted more plants in the, like, there were, there were a lot of sort of big ideas that were presented, and then what I would describe as sort of with each project, there are also sort of a reality that would, that would come with the determination as to what we were going to do. Like, we knew, we had set out these goals, right? We wanted everyone to have a secured front entrance, we wanted to separate play and parking for all the schools, we wanted everyone to have a large group space, meaning a place that kids could eat lunch. So, we had, we actually attached it in our scorecard from, what is that, back in June or July, if you want to refer to it, I can pull it up. So there were sort of, like, I would say about 10 things that we wanted all schools to have enough spaces for itinerant and gen ed classrooms. And we didn't want kids working in hallways anymore out of necessity and that kind of thing, so. So, I feel like we went, went through the process with sort of these larger, with a vision in mind, right? It's very possible, sort of as we're coming to the closure around sort of these additional spaces, and really meeting those goals. I would say, maybe not at Blythe, now that we're back to eating in the gym, but we also learned things like we were really landlocked, right? We were trying to work within a certain budget parameter, et cetera, so some of the vision, and I think that's what happens, all the, the vision gets sort of pared down to a reality, but if that's something that the district sort of wanted to reengage in some way, I do think DLA could do that. I think there's other firms, but I don't know that that's what we're looking for, is to change firms. That's a whole other sort of request for proposal process, et cetera.
No, I, I, I just, you know, as a, as a mom whose daughter last year fell on, in a resource, recess space, and she likely permanently scarred her face, I sort of look at spaces and see, you know, immediately comes to mind, like, that looks, like, it could be a safety concern, right? And so just having the assurance that, you know, it... And so, just having, um, the assurance that, you know, we're engaging all the consultants that we need to, to not only plan spaces that are beautiful and that the kids can really interact with, and that inspires their creativity, but, um, that are also just really safe, I, I value that. And so I just wanna make sure that we're doing right by our kids in that way, as I think y'all probably agree.
Next F A C, we should ask them about their, without saying what you said, we'll inquire to them what, what their experience in that is and get more confidence in, is that something we should continue to have them look at? Or, based on what we hear, explore other options.
Or just our own assessment of the work that they've done for us, you know, they've done so much for us now.
Yeah, I, so I added it to our facility advisory agenda.
I think what I heard you say, and I just wanna say, I'll make sure I followed correctly, so, is have we engaged other consultants, not architects? No, it was part of our thought process when we hired DLA, but DLA had both the spatial and engineering, so we went with that. So, we haven't, so we've thought about it, but we've not directly engaged with it. And then, did I hear that right?
Yeah, I mean, I would try to maybe put in different words, same thi, it's like, there's sort of a full service around educational space, which would include safety and design, innovation, you know, adequacy, all, sort of all of the above. But I think to continue to challenge them, to, to do an additional review.
That's, thank you, you summarized that way better than I did.
Okay.
If we're engaging them for that, I guess I will, this is coming, bringing back to mind the, the issue with the Blythe Library in terms of, you know, the seating arrangement for the last time.
Yeah.
I didn't know if they'd ever gotten back to us with any further ideas on that.
They did, and, but we haven't made any purchases, and Jim, I'll add that to our list, too. I would, they, like, there are sort of movable, almost like bleachers, so that the audience would sit up high and look down on the performance, so.
We kind of skipped around on that, yeah, I don't know if there's-
No, it's okay, uh, continuing, thank you. Continuing with the other, the main ta, the main discussion we had with F A C was the security infra, the security infrastructure updates that we're looking at. Don has done a memo that looks at things like access control and cameras and public announcements and clocks and alarms. And what we've discovered is we really need to have a solid, high, medium, low set of priorities on what we really want, because what we want then determines the level of infrastructure, and Don will correct me here, but basically, wires and servers and electronic devices that control all of this stuff. So, it's all about pulling cable.
Network infrastructure is there. It's just the extent, we're also looking at our existing cable. We do have a lot of existing cable that is present, but unused. It is a combination of tapping into cable that's already there, which I shouldn't say not there, and only adding what we need to add. So, there's, we're, we're trying to get the engineering firm, just to, to really do an assessment of what that would look like from an engineer's, an engineering standpoint. In talking with them, they really have to, you know, they have to do solid walkthroughs because it, it could be a wash or just cheaper just to run new cable to all the areas. So, that's what we're trying to evaluate is also the, the fact that we do have an infrastructure that we could tap into. Should we do that and just run what we need, or? But, and then also to, what also Joel pointed out is just knowing the scope. Because there, there is a lot involved, uh, over the next several years that we could replace, we don't have cameras, but actual, you know, motion detection, uh, or actual security systems, sensors. So, there's a lot of options.
One thing I, I asked is that we, from what Don was alluding to, is that we, as a board, we come up with a list of priorities, essentially what's important to us, because we can spend millions of dollars on security. But we just sort of come up with a priority of what's important, and then from there, that would guide what we need to do going forward.
I don't remember when we did that, I think it was earlier this year, maybe last fall.
Yeah.
Where Don had kind of given us the broad overview of just the things that we need to decide. So, I feel like you might be giving us an indication that that has been somewhat narrowed down, and we need to have a closed session to talk about what we want to do soon, or?
In regards, I guess, enough to speak freely, but in regards to security, yeah, I mean, do we want, like, how many security cameras do we want? What are we looking at? I mean, sort of putting up lists of priority, do we want auto lock doors, do we want motion sensors? What, um, do we want? And then from there, uh, obviously, we don't know the price on any of these things, but we can just sort of then say, okay, this is the most important, and then rank it accordingly.
Yeah, so we're gonna start having, it feels like we're at the part where the collective group of us need to meet. Security is closed session item, we don't want to publicly address all of our security gaps. So, it sounds like this is kind of a, a heads up that there's gonna be some closed session topics coming?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other items, there's still, these are more long-term improvements, which is the items you see at Hauser. There's some kitchen, kitchen changes that, Martha, were some of those already figured out? I think we said they were.
Jim, do you want to speak about the Hauser kitchen changes, briefly?
I know Jim had brought it up.
Yeah.
Most probably just replace some equipment that was there, an updated, there was an oven that didn't work, but we didn't, one of them we didn't need before, but we're making a lot more lunches now, so. We've, uh, we've replaced a refrigerator in the line, you know, the table you go through, take your lunch from. We're hoping that we can get, everyone can get their lunch a lot faster now, since there are more people and want to eat.
So, looking at some long-term improvements, I mean, we know that we're, we should be done with the big stuff, but continuing to assess, right now, we're back at Hauser. Locker rooms, obviously, we talked about a while ago, be revisiting that. Cafeteria, Martha, that was a thought you had. Those are, nothing's determined there, and then maintenance items that are coming up, the Hollywood low roof, the, or sorry, these are, I did not take good notes, Martha.
Potential summer maintenance for summer of twenty-five.
That's why I have twenty-five written down, thank you. Hollywood low roof, the Ames boiler, and then Central Hauser, various maintenance items, I think that was getting into, talk point.
That Ames boiler, is that gonna be similar to Blythe, $200,000?
I would assume so, because once you're in there, you probably have to replace everything because it's all based on old technology, and they want new controllers and more efficiencies. There's been no proposal on that yet, so that's something DLA and Remesh and A, in HVAC, a mechanical contractor or designer will have to look at.
Yeah.
That's not re, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have even said DLA. DLA will have a part, but the primary recommendation will come out of a mechanical designer.
Yeah. Just because the kitchen got brought up, um, I noticed, I think this is new, and if it wasn't, I just noticed that, uh, the lunch menu thing on the website, that was a nice little addition, and then our new, I, I'm drawing a blank on her name, cafeteria manager sent the thing out saying about the button. So, I was like, okay, that must be new. I appreciate that little button, um, 'cause I had had a heck of a time remembering where I put that document when I, when I needed it. So, now I know exactly where to go for it, so thank you for whoever put that out there. All right, anything, you done with the, your agenda, so, okay. All right, so we will move on to the annual review, we've got a number of intergovernmental agreements here. I'm looking, I think we're just reviewing these, right?
Right, there's no voting on these, they're, they're ongoing agreements. But we had decided several years ago that annually, we would look at all of the intergovernmental agreements that the district has with different entities.
The, the only question I had on these was, these are prior year, and in many cases, several prior years. So, these are just examples, 'cause the words haven't changed, but we're updating all the dates and all that kind of stuff each year as they go through, or no?
I actually think the titles on a lot of them, or they speak to like an ongoing, they are in effect until terminated, or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I did not read these word for word, so I, I must not have hit those words. I just noticed in a couple, some of the dates.
Yeah, we don't re-sign them or anything, we just review them.
Okay.
And the review is really a board request to review, they're not even required to be reviewed, I think it's good practice to review them, so.
Okay, so then, as we were talking about the Blythe Park, the land thing and the IGA, that's how we would structure that then? 'Cause I would, I would love to just do like a permanent, I know we can't do a permanent transfer, but-
I think, I think that's gonna be a little bit different, just because, at least from my, my perspective, just because the land ownership is still sort of under question, and if we do get clarity around that, I mean, I'm hoping we get clarity around it, 'cause I think that'll give either the Park District or us or both, I mean, actually, both of us better clarity on what we can do more, I guess, autonomy in determining what, how we want to proceed.
So, if it comes back ambiguous, which is what I'm just sort of anticipating at this point, can we just agree with the village that we own it? And just sign a document?
Something else to consider, some of these other agreements here, we have obligations to the village. So, if we're taking on some of their obligations, would it not be, would it not make sense to look at some of theirs? You know, particularly in terms of the crossing guards?
I mean, if the village wants to give us the property, I think we should.
Well, if they give it, give us the property, they're, you know, they currently are maintaining it. They currently, you know, theoretically have money set aside, or should have money set aside for updating the equipment at some point.
It's just for, I mean, I, this has just always been, just having ambiguity, I think we do need to get some sort of clarity around this. And if it comes back as ambig, as ambiguous, which I hope it doesn't, but I, I'm afraid you're probably gonna-
Every, every time we-
Well, it's called Blythe Park, there used to be, there was a park there before there was a school.
Yeah.
It probably was a, you know, nudge and a wink of, yeah, can we put a school here?
But I think we should maybe, uh, memorialize this, though, finally, with like an IGA saying, okay, make it official.
Yeah.
So that there is absolute clarity in that. And we can still have an IGA that we, like, work together to maintain the entire lot, but let's just get some clarity around it. Not just necessarily for us, but especially for future boards when-
Right.
This moves, when we move this on.
Could make sense to have that, uh, in, in a document to definitely set up straight for once and for all. But again, if we're taking on obligations, it would seem that it would only be fair for them to-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Allegiate some of our obligations to them.
Yeah.
I don't think I need to go through each one of these individually. Were there any of particular interest for discussion or comments or questions about any of these from anybody? So, I guess I can just read these out loud, just for public awareness. So, we have the IGA between the district and the village of Riverside for crossing guards. We have the Parks and Rec for the before and after school programs and other events where we use their assistance for childcare, intergovernmental between Riverside Police Department and the school district. The Blythe Park tennis courts, which I think we just, that was just last year, and that, I think that one did have a five-year, if I remember correctly, that was a five-year agreement.
We still have not restripped that, right, Jim? We haven't changed the striping on the Blythe Park tennis, because now, if there were to be a playground improvement, we may want to wait on that.
Okay, okay, okay. Between us and Riverside TV, between us and the village of Brookfield, which is a shared facilities in place of the request for sharing monetary compensation for crossing guards, we did a shared facility agreement. Brookfield and us for reciprocal police reporting, which is the same one for the Riverside Police Department. So, those are the ones that we're looking at here, and these have, most of these, I think, have been executed for a significant amount of time. But yeah, to your point, Martha, I think we decided last year or the year before to look at these on, at least have this discussion on an annual basis to make sure all board members, especially since we have two new ones now, um, and one new one previously, to make sure everybody's understanding what, uh, what this district has agreed to via contract with other municipalities. If nothing else, I'll move on.
Just one quick, sorry, just one quick thing, I remember this every year, there is a policy that lists all of our IGA, so I want to make sure, I don't know about the tennis, I, I just want to make sure that it does mirror all of the ones that we currently have. I know last year it did, I'll, I'll go through and I-
We can pull that one in.
Tennis courts are pretty new, so.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if that one's in there, or we, it might be more like gent, or it might be more evergreen, I'll have to look at how we categorize it, but I'll take a look through that. The only one that I had, perhaps on a question on, but just a comment, Martha, was the one with the Riverside Parks and Recreation. I've utilized them for before and after care throughout the entirety of both my children's elementary. I know they're currently undertaking, um, focus groups, and I'm not sure if any of that involves questions surrounding, like, it's about their programming in general. And I wonder if any of it includes feedback on, or if any families have utilized after care. I'm just always curious what type of feedback, 'cause I know we don't really necessarily engage or collect in that. And I wonder if they're independently doing that. It's just more curiosity to ensure that, you know, what is being offered continues to, to serve the community.
I don't, I don't know, um, I can certainly reach out and ask. I know there, there've been some, like, just, like, just today, they were talking about, they've done a demographic study of just Riverside. So, there's a number of factors, and I can certainly reach out to them and ask them what, if they're gathering. I know they're gathering feedback specifically about playgrounds.
Yes, yeah.
Whether or not they're gathering feedback about before and after care, other kinds of programming.
Just like services and, and, but, just more.
I'll find out.
Anything else? Okay, I'll move into new business discussion. And first here is the proviso school township treasure overview and future considerations. So, there's a recent law, legislation, I guess I was, I should have looked it up before I came. Yesterday was the date for it to be signed, did it actually get signed?
Yes.
Okay, so, what does that mean for us? I don't know who was, I think, you, David, you participate, and Dan participated, so, um, I don't know, Martha, did you have a summary overview, or?
So, so Jim has shared a number of documents here, um, including a, essentially a summary or an overview of our current role with the township treasurer. I can share with you, it's been a point of conversation with also our other neighboring districts, so.
Okay.
I can share a little bit about that, just anecdotally.
The governor signed it on August 12th. So, the board has sixty days to appoint a trustee or withdraw from, um, the treasurer. You could do both, you could appoint a trustee within sixty days that could attend the reorganization meeting of all the districts that don't intend to withdraw and decide after that, like, I think in May, we could say, yeah, well, we still want to withdraw, and then pull out then and have the benefit of seeing what the reorganization would be. We could, if there's any more questions, I can try to find the answers to, but I think that, um-
I guess one question I have is, I know we have sixty days.
Right.
But I guess, is sixty days enough for us to get up and running to take?
Well, so if we withdraw, it would be, take effect July 1st, so. I think anytime we withdraw, if we waited till August, next August, it would take effect the following July 1st, so.
I see.
Yeah, that would be-
So, the actual withdrawal would be July 1st of 2025, if we were to make it, if the board was making a determination?
Yes.
So, it sounds like we do need to then appoint the trustee-
I think-
In the interim, if it's an interim, right?
Yeah, we can withdraw at any time. I mean, that's, I'm looking at the mandatory language right here. It clearly says, allow school districts who are part of Cook County to withdraw from the jurisdiction and authority of the trustees of schools of township at any time if they so wish. So, we just need to appoint this trustee within sixty days. And anything else regarding township treasurer, whether or not we choose to stay or go, we've got, we can do that on our own timeline.
Yeah, you could take more time deciding that.
So, I guess my question is, though, if we decide to, just hypothetically, we decide we withdraw June 1st, 2025, and then it would take effect July 1st, 2025, so we could do, okay. But it's just like, if we take- But it's just like if we take, make the decision hypothetically, and say now we have to do this, or made, like made the decision in August 2025, it wouldn't take effect until July 2027?
Yes.
Okay, kind of. So now it makes sense that we appoint a treasurer, at least within the interim?
I, I lightly, dumbish question, but typically what individuals in the district can serve in a trustee role? I know LaGrange, like when, like who is their trustee?
So, and what I can share with you is what people are planning to do right now, so it could be a board of, a member of the Board of Education, or it could be me, or it could be Jim. And I would tell you that, or it could be somebody else, I mean, it's really who you appoint. The other districts in our area that I'm aware of are mostly appointing their person in their director of finance role.
There was something in here that said that person cannot hold the position for more than two years without being reappointed, so we just need to reappoint?
We just have to renew.
Okay.
I think that makes complete sense to have Jim as our appointed representative. He's most in touch with working with them in the past, and I assume would be, continue to be on the, since they run our money essentially, and you make requests to them for payment. I'm summarizing a little bit, you're in the best position to have some oversight.
I think Dave wanted to do it.
Unless Dave really wants to do it.
You know, I did, but I'm not going to do it.
Dave?
That's really the board's decision, I should have put out.
No, I mean, that, Jim is where my head went at, honestly, and I just wasn't sure with some of the information, how that would work with the two-year thing and all that, but I mean, I, I think I, I personally think somebody in your position or in the district would be better suited to understand the information, what it means, how it impacts everything, so I don't want to do it. I, I don't know how much value I would bring to it.
I think Jim does it, and if there's larger questions that need board input, then the expectation is, it becomes an agenda item.
Is it, just out of curiosity, is it something that you would delegate on your team, like I'm just thinking from like a, how much of a time commitment would it be for you to do this?
Well, I think the transition would be, take the time, how we're going to reassign duties. I don't think it would take a lot of extra time in the long run, once we get, and it may save a little time, it takes 20 minutes to go pick up the checks and come back, so there's pluses and minuses.
But we did talk about the fact that it probably would require additional support services in the business office.
Yeah, where we can reassign those.
But we're also paying a, a membership fee to the township treasurer, there's kind of a sense that it could be a wash, but.
Yeah, it's my goal, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, what was that, like 40?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five.
Annual charges, seventy-five thousand, four oh four.
That's, that's a potential resource though, that we could look towards potentially shouldering, shouldering this ourself at some point though, if we were to take it on rather than paying.
That's, Jim, that wouldn't pay, seventy-five thousand wouldn't pay for one full-time employee, so.
To do this, no? You'd probably have some financial manager, you know, who would help oversee your investments, and then there's probably some logistical support also needed around literally addressing the additional payroll duties.
Right, and accounts payable and, there's a lot of things they control, dispersments mostly.
I think what we wanted tonight was to bring like, you know, Dan and David's conversation, Jim's, mine obviously, but to all of you, as a very preliminary conversation around is, is there sort of a direction that the board would like us to, to turn?
I, I, speaking just for myself, but as long as I've been on the board, and anytime the township treasurer's office has come up, it's rarely been good. It's, I haven't dealt with them directly, but I've heard previous business managers complain about, you know, how they do business, how slow they are. I've, you know, voted to approve fees for software that we didn't want, but were forced to take. I've also had large discussions on million-dollar losses for selling bonds that didn't exist. That's a different entity, but I've also read newspaper accounts of a different township treasurer's office and their interactions with Lions Township High School. I, if it's within, personally, if it's, I think if it's within our ability to take this on, we would be foolish not to take advantage of this.
Well, I think, I think to that, that point though, what we should do as a board, is that we, if you can identify sort of what we, what additional things we need to do, and like how many roles, or like, how much, do we have internal staff that can do some stuff? And like how much more work that's going to do, that's going to take on for them, and do we need additional staff? And then do we need a, a, a full FTE, part FTE, do we need a consultant, like, so let's just take a look at the cost that it's going, like let's identify what we need to do, and then identify the costs for us to take it on. And then from there, I think that would give us a better picture on how to move forward.
That's one of the reasons I'd like to wait a couple months for that, or whether we, either way.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So then we need to appoint a trustee in the, in the interim, what might be considered interim, or in the short term, I should say.
No matter what we have to. That's why I'm saying, I'm wanting to defer the, do we stay or do we go conversation into something that's much larger, more like what Dave is saying. But no matter what, we have to appoint a trustee until July 1 of 2025. Is this?
Oh, yeah, that did not click with me.
And I know talking to someone else, I said, I thought it would take more than, even more than a year to withdraw, but I, you know, again, this would be new to us, so I, I don't see where the additional time would need to come from, but if it's delayed for some reason, then you have your trustee.
To Dave, sorry, go on.
Oh, you then knew to have a trustee in, your trustee.
Right, and I guess the thing is, we need to have a trustee in place while we can do the analysis, we have essentially a year, 11 months, to do the analysis of whether or not we want to leave, if it doesn't make sense to leave. And the fact that we can like essentially leave on June 30th to make it effective immediate, I mean, following day. Right, that, I, I feel we should, we need to assign a trustee, and then do our own due diligence analysis and determine whether or not we want to stay or if we want to do this on our own.
Yes, I agree with that, because I don't really fully understand what a withdrawal means, because we never, it was never an option, we didn't want to pay the millions of dollars that I read about, who was it? Lions, yeah.
Well, that was a lawsuit situation.
Sure, sure, to get out of it though, and it, I mean, I don't know if that spurred this or not, but we weren't willing, I mean, that's what it felt like, I wasn't.
I believe the Lions situation absolutely spurred the fact that township treasurer's offices have been running on their own for too long. And so therefore, we now have something where the school districts have direct input via the trustee to give guidance to that treasurer's office. If we can provide, and this is, gets to Dave's analysis, is we would need to know what, exactly what they do right now, what burdens we would take on if we left the office, and what are the benefits to stay? I mean, and then also assess all the things that Dan just mentioned, you know? But can having a trustee who is responsible to us fix some of the problems? This is a longer discussion.
Right, yeah.
It is.
Well, then I'll thank LT for spending the one or two million dollars that they're doing in the lawsuit to, to give us this option that we did not have to spend. Was it more than that? I don't know, I just remember a couple articles about like a million or two million.
What precipitated the, the legislation, giving schools the option?
It was the LT situation, yes, and in particular how.
Classic Chicago politics stuff in it.
It was surprising to come out that this is only a Chicago area thing, I assumed it, it was statewide, but apparently it's only just here.
A class two county is probably a county over a certain population, and Cook County always falls into those categories, because it's always a carve-out.
So I guess just to move us along, I agree with your assessment, Dave, on understanding what this means for us before we decide. So are you, okay, I mean, it sounds like we're kind of talking about you being that appointed person, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Is that?
I, I would assume there's board action required, and that would be at a future meeting. We'll find out from forensic if it's like by resolution or by sort of simple board action.
I think we would have to do it at the September meeting to get it within the 60 days, so we could talk about it.
Sixty days from the day that you signed it? Okay, so you said August 12th?
Right.
September, October, so we should have until, yeah, so we would need, the end of September would be that meeting, yeah, okay.
Unless we make a special meeting.
Yep. Right, so we can, yeah, can we have, can we do that before the regular?
Or you think it means to be a September COW?
No, September regular.
Talk about it at the COW, and then, and then vote on it.
Yeah, September board, right, we just need to find out what type of board actions required.
Right, I think forensic should be able to get us to that before the October meeting or September meeting.
It just says appointment of a school trustee by school board must occur within 60 days.
Yeah, but in order for that to happen, I think we need a vote that all, you know, at least a majority of us agree on this, so we probably need some sort of resolution or something like that. Okay, so we'll target that, so we'll bring this up at COW to have a, whatever further discussion, and then we'll take a vote on that in the September regular meeting, current, as planned right now, so, okay.
No weapons on school property, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that discussion, thank you Jim, thank you Dan, and Dave for attending that, that meeting and bringing this all back, much appreciated. That brings us to Ms. Gunn and policies, would you like to give us a briefing on press plus number 115?
Yeah, so, it's so funny, so press has all these real clever names for their updates, like summer spruce up, spring cleaning, they didn't name this one, but I did, I was like, what the heck is this? Why the busy work? No, but actually I think they do it because that way they're not adding more, when the fall legislative issue came out, which did, the press 116 has already come out, which we will not talk about tonight, but, so we're talking about 115. Honestly, there really isn't a lot, typically I kind of go through some and highlight items that I think are of note, or really worthy, that stand out to me. A lot of these were the five-year review or monitor and review, as they're now called, and everything, you know, kind of, the committee and I reviewed them, we also reviewed them with the relevant individuals on the leadership team, Jim, I think Donna reviewed one as well. So everything looked good to us, in terms of any that had changes, they were very minor footnotes, you know, just small, somewhat inconsequential. The only things I'll point out is, you might recall, we had a discussion a while back on the, the library one in regards to like book ban 6230, and, and we chose to go with the default language of the library bill of rights. And I think we discussed that versus using our own language, actually turned out to be in our favor, because districts that opted not to use the library bill of rights language have to do some additional work at this time to, you know, submit their language, so that they can be considered for the, the money. I, I forget how much we, it's like, no, no, but you know, we don't have to do any extra work for the money that we were receiving, so that's, that's good. But there were different aspects of, like the administrative procedures, which is not something that the board, that is part of policy that were impacted, which again Martha and her team are aware of. There was, there is one that I just took note of, you'll notice 460, it's a D96 edit, so it wasn't part of press, but I guess just through the, you know, routine monitoring, Jim identified policy 460 in terms of the amount, increasing the amount from 25 to 35,000. So he was explaining that to me earlier as to how we came across that, but that wasn't part of press necessarily.
Yeah, so what was that?
Jim? That was the only question I had about all of this, is what initiated the?
I, I asked today also about it, sorry Jim, the, the 460, the purchases and contracts that we updated from the 25 to 35.
So is that just our choice? I thought the 25 was a state thing, no?
Not that one.
I don't know why I thought that.
I don't think so, did this come out of the pandemic as I recall, am I thinking of that correctly?
Yeah. Oh, the state raised it, okay.
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 And I honestly think what it.
But it used to be 25 in this, because I, I thought it was a state requirement. Twenty-five, yeah, so we're just, okay.
I think we had updated it like in one part of the policy, and then like the 25 appears later, and so I think it was just perhaps not updated in both places, so.
So the 35 is not a new thing, we just missed it?
I think we missed the second part of it.
Okay.
That's kind of what I.
So I'm just finding out that the state raised that limit, so I clearly missed that.
Anyway, right, so, I don't know if you all identified any that you had questions on other than the 460, which was again our own edit, thanks Jim for identifying that correction or edit. Martha, I don't know if you had anything else, I know this one, we kind of were like.
Yeah, it seemed kind of.
Busy work. Yeah, I would say simple review.
I had a question just for, this was policy 5130, and it just, because it seems to be adding the same information that's crossed out, and it just was puzzling, perhaps that's just how it is, but it was really strange.
Yeah, I think they, this one was like the confidentiality one, right? Okay, internal info.
Internal information, yeah.
What got crossed out, what do you see on yours?
So essentially, it looks like the title is on this side, it's crossed out.
Oh, yeah, like legal references, yeah.
All the verbiage was exactly the same as far as I could tell.
Yeah, I think it said they added like a reference to online, like student personnel, yeah, the Student Online Personnel Protection Act to just secure like data online, that's what I recall from 5130. But as you can see, like the, I don't know, the, the sort of content and substance of the policy didn't change, it's just the, the references, which we don't, which we remove when we publish our policies on our website, that's all that was.
Yeah, legal references are updated.
They had the, they just changed it so that the like, quarter factor of regulation or the, all those numbers come before the title.
It seemed that way, and I just wasn't sure why that would be, why that would be different. Just merely my simple musings.
Yeah, reading on and taking note of footnotes and all that.
A lot of track changes.
But I know it was just a first read, so if anything else does come up, and just, I mentioned press 116 did just come out August 1, I think it was. So it is primarily updating 2265, all of the Title IX suite of materials. There was a recent webinar, took place last week while I was out of town, but the recording's available, so I'm going to watch that, and then, yeah, the committee will meet to discuss, I don't know if this one will involve attorney.
Yeah, and then we should meet and potentially bring to September COW, and we have more time than that, but.
Yes, yeah, we got a memo that we have more time.
Which would potentially bring us into approving one, press 115 and 116 at the September board meeting, which we could stagger that if we'd like to.
Okay.
Is it intense?
It, I mean, it's, it's not, this one was not, it's small, but I think it is, the content is intense, and I also believe there's like ongoing, what is it, like litigation or ongoing issues with its implementation? So I think there might be a lot of consult board attorneys to see how your, what is recommended at this time. So, and, and again, they tried to get ahead of, you know, we updated titles earlier, and just started doing some of the preliminary work, but I think it's intense in substance, but not like, it's not a huge, I've had, you know, way thicker stacks of, of press. When I saw, when I came back from vacation, kind of like very kindly dropped off a paper copy, and I was like, oh, okay, it's not that bad, but I know the content is, is significant.
Okay, thank you for preparing us for that then.
All right, I think that's all, any questions, anything comes up?
All right, and then as a separate attachment, L3 here, policy review cycle is really just the monitoring calendar that you have done a very good job of getting us in alignment with, and a lot of those that are in here. And a lot of those that are in here, I noticed. I do also appreciate, and I don't know if this is your directive or just Kathy doing it, the review and like calling out the review and monitoring and the actual things, so. Just ever since we started doing that, that's been really helpful as I go through this, so.
That vernacular, I know it used to be called five-year. So some of us are accustomed to that, to that language, but now they've moved to review and monitor.
And then L4, Committee of the Whole Planning Documents 2024, 2025. I know we've had some dialogue around just being able to, for us to project out what our upcoming meetings are. So I don't know if you have any commentary or if it's just, I just viewed it as more informational document, but I didn't know if there's anything you wanted to.
Just if there's comments, certainly welcome them. I know some of you have asked me at different times sort of how we plan the COW topics and there actually is a method to the madness around sort of using our strategic plan goals, sort of month by month, but also topics that come up of interest or sort of pending action items. So I use like the English Language Arts Curriculum as a really good example, right? Talking about it at Education Committee, but then it's something that requires board action at the future. Press Policy is another really good example, right? That we'll usually talk about them at COW. This meeting, as you've noticed, is kind of a combination of the COW in August that we didn't have as well as the regular board meeting. But I did want you to see it and also if there's particular topics. I know we have like artificial intelligence listed on there as a future sort of both, it's Education Committee, but both Don and Angela coming forward with them, kind of where the district is in terms of our thinking and planning around that. I knew that was kind of a hot topic in education settings right now. I think, you know, you'll see it's September COW, some of that's already sort of filled in, right? Like, so we tend to literally, our cabinet team will look at this month to month or several months in advance. Some things, like we know, we always do our student achievement presentation in November, right after the state report card has come out. Tax levy, school fees, budget preparation, those things follow a certain cycle, so those things are on the calendar. But where there are things not listed, it's just because some of those items are still yet to be determined. As the action teams that relate to the strategic plan goals get started, we'll be inserting more of those updates there, so. Any questions or any recommendations, thoughts around particular topics for the coming year?
Beyond the strategic plan, I don't think so at this point in time.
For our cabinet team, I think it feels very linear that we're doing goals 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, 1, 2, but I know how it gets presented then sometimes doesn't always feel that way, so.
With the new science curriculum, you have ELA updates. Is that the new curriculum? But with the new science curriculum, it might be nice at the end of the year to hear how that all went.
Okay.
Yeah, that's actually a good call out. I would be curious about the new curriculum stuff.
Yeah.
Or just making sure there's some updates on like how that's going and all of that.
It would be good to hear updates on how the new curriculums that we voted on and how they do, how they perform. I guess also we just talked about adding an item to probably September for the trustee for the.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We should add that.
So that's what I'll do, is I'll literally make notes in here as we're discussing other things. Or discussing things here.
At least from the conversations I've had with you around this general topic, like I think for me it was a spot where it was a good reminder, like November, we've got the, I thought I just saw the state, yeah, the state report cards on there, like the tax levy. So some of those big things that happen all the time at the same time, just remembering when they are and when we talk about it, just helping me keep some of that type of stuff straight. So I think I'm seeing most of that in here already, but.
Perhaps this is captured in there and I haven't scrolled enough to find it, but I know we had discussed at one of the COWs that we felt it would be helpful in the future. I know we do this at New Board Orientation, but like the MTS, like the, like advanced learning and, because that, isn't that also undergoing and?
Yes, so the advanced, and I actually have it on here. So Angela has a, is already preparing for September COW. I think it's on the, yeah, we'll have a proposal for working with a consultant. It's on mine and when I, let me see if it's on the one in.
You have one on March 2.
And that, the March would be the target for when like the review process is complete and if there's recommendations, there could be recommendations that relate to personnel or relate to resources. But what you'll hear at the September COW from Angela is already some thinking around working with a particular consultant group to support the process of review for District 96 overall.
Yeah, I remember it was just helpful to understand like what it currently is. And again, there was a good presentation done at New Board Orientation. For me, now that's been a while, so.
But that, and I appreciate that the things that come out of the orientation. So I think, I liken advanced learning a little bit to like where we were with full day kindergarten. So if you recall, when we were in the process of considering whether or not we'd go to full day, there was maybe not every month, but COW meeting, it was, because that committee was meeting really regularly, so it was research, it was the survey, it was, you know, the financial pieces of it. So advanced learning, what you'll hear in September is a proposal for how the process will sort of unfold for the year through a committee process. I anticipate, working with an outside consultant, you'll hear more about sort of how Angela's come to that recommendation at the September COW. And then I think we targeted in March because I think we do want to bring forward if there are financial implications to it. Again, I think of resources or personnel and those things are yet to be determined, but that would be a timeframe for the board to be making any important decisions if there were those resources tied to it, tied to review process.
And then would, since most of our education goals are around like MAP scores and other score, like the state report card's a very specific thing, but for the education goal for updates, I don't, I don't remember like, I know we talk about those scores and stuff. Would that just feed in because it's part of the goal update?
Not sure I understand that question.
So we're going to do map testing next week, right? And then that testing comes back and we analyze it. I'm not seeing that explicitly in here. Is that just being put under Goal Four because that's how the Goal Four updates? Because those are a lot of our goals or where do we get that piece of it?
So what, you tend to get it in November for the first time through. So you're not looking just at IAR data, you tend to look at MAP as well as IAR data.
Okay.
As well as some of the MTSS data. So we talk about like triangulating our data, so when we're making sort of determinations, overview, we're not just going to link it to one data point. I think Goal Four is the family community partnerships. So when I say Goal Four update, but.
Oh, 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 okay.
But I think what you're actually saying is, is there a way to do more periodic board discussion around student achievement data?
Right, yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That is what I'm asking.
And I think we have, and Angela's not here tonight, I know it was RB Parent Night, so that's where she is tonight. But we've talked about, you know, is it meaningful to bring in MAP data? So three times a year and do those timeframes work? So it's something, and she has, she has some thoughts on that that I'm not sure I would best articulate, but she could articulate that.
Yeah, I think it, I think it'd be worth a discussion. I'm just, like, from my perspective, it's of interest to me and I think I've kind of heard that generally around the table, so just figuring out what that looks like. And I don't want to be too narrow in our focus, but I do think we need to get a little bit deeper into some of that stuff, so unless others disagree with me, but I think that's what I've kind of collectively heard.
Well, it's sort of a comprehensive approach to looking at it in November. Sometimes we're not tying the data to an actual assessment of the curriculum that we've employed. And so having a more, a review that's more tied to curriculum, I think would be helpful at some point throughout the year, whether it's at the halfway point or at the end of the year.
Like a pulse check, just to make sure things are progressing the way that we want.
Right.
And I think there's a number of different ways to go about it. So there's the, like, one of the things that are empowered teams, like part of our collaborative team process that we're in here to have, it's a strong thread of our professional learning, is really that schools develop their own school improvement plans, that teams have their own sort of grade level improvement plans, et cetera. So there's ways to sort of, you know, a team might be looking very specific at their math data, another team might be looking very specifically at their ELA data. I mean, everybody's looking at all their data, but they may really set very targeted goals around an area that they notice needs, you know, more significant improvement, let's say. So that's a process that's still unfolding, but I think it, it gets to sort of all the same sort of big ideas, how do you all receive more periodic update on student achievement? And I don't know if it would come more from like curriculum assessments, NWA map assessment. IAR obviously is a key piece that boards look at, it's a strong.
Given how much, how expensive those curriculums that we purchase are, I think it would be very relevant to the board to get periodic updates on how those are going, how those are being implemented, I guess. And we, I think I talked about this the last time. It seems kind of empty that we get to the end of a cycle and we need to renew the la, it seems like we're never renewing a curriculum agreement. We're always getting something new, which does seem to be a gap of several years figuring out how it was implemented, what went right, what went wrong. How do we learn from that when we get the next one? And I'm sure all those conversations are taking place internally, but.
And some of what we're looking at is, curriculum's designed to address the standards and the standards are assessed through the IAR, you know. So when you're looking at IAR data and we're noticing, let's say, that our math wasn't as robust as our ELA, you know, then we're saying like, is there something in our curriculum tool resources that needs some kind of upgrade, enhancement, replacement? So it really is all tied together, but I think, I appreciate the comments because it helps me realize like we need to get clearer with bringing that to you with greater.
Yeah, and maybe that's all it is, we need to have a clear understanding. Maybe we're just not picking up on something, but it looks like September's already kind of full, but maybe October might be good to have a more just discussion about what that looks like with Angela present.
Yeah.
I am very curious about the AI in District 96. I've been reading more about AI in schools and I've been curious how we're thinking about that, so I'm glad you have that on your.
The short version is we're going to form a task force, you know, made up of teachers and administrators. And I've been to just enough AI workshops now to be dangerous. But, but really starts with this idea that first ensuring that we have safety measures in place for our students where, you know, AI can lead to sort of bad content essentially, or whether it's creating or use of it. The other big area is teacher use, right? The idea of teachers, like there's, there's definitely, I would say, in the field, a lot of conversation around it has the potential to revolutionize how teachers plan, right? So that if you're planning for a group of children with six different reading levels in your classroom, you can access six different reading levels very easily. There are tools made just for teachers around all of that. And then the other one is really student use. And student use and the impact and questions around plagiarism and sort of having exemplars. Are you learning from that or is that plagiarism? You're nodding, Marla, I'm sure you see it in the university setting as well. So, so kind of three, three big areas, safety, student use, staff use. And then figuring out sort of what are our best practices in those areas. And there's some playbooks that have been written by other districts. I would say some of the large districts have been kind of more ahead of the curve on that and I think we'll get there. But I know already, we know our children are already using it, our teachers are already using it. And so it's, you know, refining, making sure we have the right supports in place for both staff and for students.
AI.
The only policy that, the area linked to policy was around plagiarism and just, you know, sort of exercising caution and having ways to sort of determine or understand that, helping students to understand what's plagiarism. What I've seen other school districts developing is what I would call guidance and not policy. So there's some districts, and I think it speaks to sort of in a more probably detailed way than what I just pointed out, but, you know, where are we, how are we advising around safe and appropriate use?
So I guess going back to, I know Dan and Marla say, I mean, if we can do sort of talking about like how it relates to progress and sort of looking at this. I know you mentioned earlier that there was like some Saffoos rolling out the EL. Saffoos like with the vendor?
Oh.
I mean, if we can maybe just sort of drill down and find out what happened, I mean, because I guess for me, I know we got, like, it was, it came across as this is the vendor we want, this is, they came rate really high, but they botched a rollout. I mean, just speaking, who do rollouts all the time? That's sort of, you're putting your, you always put your best foot forward. And I just sort of, to me that just sort of, even though it's, it raises a little red flag for me, if they botch something, like, are they, how are they going to be? Did we make the right decision, I guess is my question.
Yeah.
So.
We'll be keeping a close eye on that.
So thank you for starting this, at least putting it out there just to kind of give us a preview of what's to come in the future. And then I think that might be a good spot to just, as we have things, we got a place to put it down as a potential idea for a potential topic, so thank you.
As you all know, it changes. Sometimes there's, all of a sudden, too many things have accumulated and we'll say, let's not do this because the meeting is just potentially too long. And this can wait a month, so. And some things will be repeated. So I wonder about AI, right? Like that we may talk about it once, we may talk about it multiple times. Student achievement will definitely give some additional thought to how we can bring, you know, meaningful student achievement information to all of you on a more regular basis.
And to your point on meetings being too long, my goal has been to keep this to under two hours. I think we're through most.
We've got 35 minutes.
I do. I noted that. But we always do that assessment of just how much content is this? And, you know, people just, we've all had long workdays and all of that. And just thinking back from pre, the facility stuff, it just took time because it just was meeting. Now that we're past that, hopefully we can keep most of these meetings under two hours. And unless it's important, I'll punt it to the next one or at least, that's my current thought process on this, so if anybody, just to be transparent on that, if anybody has any problems with the way the meetings are being run in the future, you let me know and we'll see what we can do to mix them up a little bit, so. So far, we've been doing pretty good. These have been pretty short, the last couple. And this is our last topic, so unless we want to sit here and chit chat for the next 33 minutes, which I'm guessing we don't.
I was going to propose, I don't know if it's too late, do we want to have a board member vacation pics? It might be a good thing to see. If this were my team, I would have us do it.
Then we need the screen set up, so we will save.
Yeah, for next time, next time.
I think more riveting, I just want to make sure everybody does sign. Or all voting members on the budget tonight do go ahead and sign this, so we can use our time for that once we post.
Can you just start sending that around?
I always feel weird doing that, but I will, she told me to.
Well, I'm just going to, I'm going to close everything out, so don't worry about it. I'm assuming, Kathy, no more public comment. I don't see anybody here, so, okay. Future meeting dates, we have September 4, 2024, Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM. That'll be at the multipurpose room, Ames School. September 18, 2024, the regular business meeting here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center at 7:00 PM. The October 2 meeting is canceled, is that Columbus Day or?
It's not Columbus Day, I think it's a Jewish holiday.
Oh, is it?
And that's why we were combining, I'm looking at you Kathy, we're combining our October meetings, right?
That's, I know, I used the wrong term.
And it was a combination of.
What's the day of this, the? No, I know, October 16th is the meeting. What was the day of the? Okay, good.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, right, the social.
And then, yeah, so October 16 then. So the October 2 meeting, COW meeting will be canceled, which we just talked about, the COW meeting, so we might need to look at that, okay.
And that'll be another, kind of like tonight, sort of combined.
Yeah, okay, so we'll figure, we'll make sure that doesn't go more than two hours because I just committed to that in public. So on October 16, that meeting will be two hours or less. Regular business meeting, 7:00 PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.